A sufficient number of work supervisors experienced today. This also is an official meeting that is coming with supervisors and an open public as well. One thing to note, the presentations today will be recorded. There's a camera right here, so if you don't feel comfortable being on camera, make sure you get back. There is a chance that this recording could be displayed for the public as well, since this is a public meeting. So Jim, I'm going to do a little bit of explaining all that out better.
Okay, thank you, Jim. If we're going to say that under state law, that there are more than two supervisors in a physical location, even electronic location, it is considered an official meeting and has to be open to the public. And this has to be taken, and therefore I'm going to invite our Mr. Clay Jackson to officially open our meeting. And we'll also have to officially close it at the conclusion of the presentations. Clay?
I'm Clay Jackson with Madison County Board Supervisors. We do have a forum. I do real terrible with my phone, so I apologize. We do have a forum. We do need to adopt an agenda. What would you like to do?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to approve the agenda as per votes.
Second.
Most of the main second for the discussion. Here none. All in favor, shoot the book and say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Thank you all.
All right. Back in the fall of last year, Dr. Ezele's office was right beside mine. We got together and I asked him if he thought that this 484 project could involve one of the needs of Madison County. And so we talked about it and he agreed that it sounded like a viable project. Now, what the project was is we wanted to develop an information system that was dedicated to strategic assessment and planning. That's a process that we are trying to improve in our county. We have a lot of challenges with budgeting, with taxes, as every other locality does. But we're a small rural county, and so it's significantly more of a challenge for us. I got approval from the board supervisors, especially after I told them I wasn't going to talk to anybody. And I want to first of all thank Dr. Ezele, Dr. Wayne, and Dr.
Okinson.
Okinson. I was afraid to say that I always mispronounce her name. But these folks run this class. It is an excellent program. It's a lot of work. And secondly, I'd like to thank the board supervisors and the Madison County government staff enthusiastically supported the program. Worked with students, were willing to come over here to do presentations, did Zoom meetings, did Zoom calls, completed surveys. And they're looking forward to this, what we're going to see today. Also like to thank our other faculty in our departments. This year, we were able to include from our department, some of our business analytics faculty, and fine tuning some of the analytics in these systems that you're going to see today. And that's something that we're going to move forward with in the future to bring more folks from different disciplines into this project. Just a couple of things about this, and I really want to focus on the students here. When we started looking at this, at our first presentation back earlier this semester, we were talking to the over 100 students who are in this program. And one of the first things that I wanted to clarify and emphasize to them was that this was not a made up project to keep them busy. This is a real problem. And successful completion of this project could impact thousands of people, not only in our county, but eventually possibly across our state. I also wanted to challenge them as students. And I'm going to stop using the term students, and I'm going to start saying they're professionals, because that's what they are. There are so many professionals today that can do all kinds of wonderful things. Programs, developers, web designers, managers, economists, you name it. But there are so few people that can actually solve a problem. And that's what I think has been accomplished with these today. Couple of other things that we experienced during the project, because I was liaison and because I was on campus, it made it easier for the students to come and talk to me, was the fact that I think they got experience to some of the things they'll see in the future in the future careers. One of which was the fact that teams don't always work the way that they should. And we had some teams that didn't do so well. We had teams that were essentially dysfunctional, unfortunately. And I had students come to my office and I would tell them, I said, "Look, you need to get into the habit of crossing the finish line, even if you're not going to win." Because that will, that habit to form now, to finish the job and finish strong, is a habit that will carry through your professional career and will be directly impacted by your success or your lack of. Unfortunately, I had several students come to my office apologizing to me that their teams had not performed well. And I said, "Okay, here's a good lesson, folks. You're going to be out there working and you're going to do a lot of work and somebody else is going to pay credit for it. So just do what you need to do, finish strong." Now, our department a few years ago started to place an emphasis on developing requirements solicitation skills for the students in the computer information systems majors. And requirements solicitation is about trying to determine what a client needs, what system they need, what are their requirements. And an important component of that is how to communicate with the clients. And during this particular project, the top three teams that are represented here today did that very well. They were involved in user testing. They kept clear communications with me. And, you know, I have to point out a few of the folks here, the liaisons for each team. Abby Davis, Brad Abby. Abby was with Transparent Technologies, kept in touch, set up meetings, sent out surveys. And also from the Valley Visionaries, our liaison, Jessica Shandling. Jessica. I have to tell you the story about Jessica. If you know Jessica, you're really going to appreciate this. Jessica stayed on this, and when I say stayed on the podcast, she stayed on the podcast. And, you know, we've had multiple meetings, communications. She went around asking help from college, from other professors, one of whom has an office across the hall from me, Dr. Bag. And he's our systems analysis and design specialist here in the department. One day, I was in my office getting ready to go for class, and Jessica and another member of her team show up to Dr. Bag's office. And I hear them in there having a discussion about the use case diagram for this project. So I left and taught class, came back an hour and a half later, and they're still in there. Only, the discussion had escalated in intensity. With Dr. Bag at the board frantically trying to draw a use page diagrams, and Jessica, I could hear her in there saying, "Okay, explain that to me." So this is the kind, this is the caliber of students that we have. We also have Travis G. Are you here today, Travis Brown? He must not have been able to make it. I wanted to see him today. But, you know, Travis also told me something that I really appreciated. When I was talking about crossing the finish line, he was in my office. And he said, "You know what? Tell you what my father told me." He says, "Not only do you have to run through the finish line, but you have to keep on running after that." And I thought that was one of the best expressions on that concept that I ever learned. I'm going to leave you with this. We always generational, generational lane argue about the upcoming generation. And of course, us older folks always say, "Well, they're inadequate." We hear a lot of bad things about Generation Z, just like we did. I heard about baby boomers in my day. But I'm going to tell you something, folks. If these people that you're going to see today, and the students here at our college, are going to take leadership roles in business and government, I can tell you, you have nothing to worry about. Actually, you've got something to really look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Speaking of collaborating with all of our students, I can say, you know, Jessica Stain. So today, even though we have what we call our top two team presentations, I'll go along with what Professor Jewett said in saying that all A work teams did amazing work. Our capstone students spend hundreds and hundreds of hours outside of class working on these capstone projects in most semesters. They go above and beyond. So every semester, I am never surprised at the quality and the level, the professional approach that these teams take to these products. So even though, as I said, they only have our top two teams doing the main presentations today, all A teams should really be live. If you look around, applaud for all of our capstone. Professor Jewett said, "In a few days, we'll no longer call students, but professionals." It's a non-merited local road without graduations. So first up, when our A work teams, Team Sharp Minds, I would invite them if they could give us a general overview of the requirements of this project, what the system needs to do, and the tasks that can be accomplished by users who achieve and use that system. So I'd like to invite the Team Sharp Minds to the middle stage and give us a overview.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you all for coming to the CIS and Mad Collaborative Plan Presentations. I'm very, very excited to be able to see what these two supervisors have been able to accomplish during the Horstliz project. And before we get to, we are a Team Sharp Minds, like Dr. Ezele said, we were the runner up fairly. But we are excited to be offering you guys, give you guys a general overview, just kind of go over what this project was about and why Madison County Government really needed us to take it on. So you go ahead and put it quick. These are the presenters. We have
I'm Morgan Levy. I'm the UX designer.
My name is Mortar Seaw. I'm the project manager.
I'm Sean Lundy. I'm the client liaison on project development.
And my name is Kevin Rao. I'm the user experience designer. We also have other members of our team who cannot do this project without, we just want to list them up here. And now we're going to go to Mortar to go over the project.
So who we are, we're Sharp Minds. We're a collaborative group of teams, CIS and SMAD. And our aim is to deliver an effective system for our client, the Madison County Government. Our clients for a document sharing system is communicating in meetings from sharing documents in Excel sheets through email. Madison County needed an information system that addressed organizational issues with document sharing while aligning with the county's mission for growth and development for elected officials, county staff, and county systems. Over the course of 10 weeks, our group sought out to get to the root of the issue for Madison County. Client meetings focusing on user research, UX design, front end development, backend development, and database integration. And now Kevin will go over the specifics.
So in order for us to design and develop a system that works perfectly for Madison County, we had to keep in mind the needs of everything they needed in the system. So first, we need to be simply an online system to share and manage files at its bare bones. But on top of that, we need to be able to perform analysis on the data and project trends for the future, and share these results with the public. And furthermore, we need to make sure that all of the citizens of Madison County, across the state of Virginia, whoever wants to use the system, can easily find in North Texas any files they need. And to go more into the requirements additionally.
Thank you, Kevin. So for a few requirements for the Madison County system, we had the development of analytical models for projecting future spending and revenue over three to five years. And also implement, also implement team security access of the system, allowing a lot of users to, for various roles and privileges. And then also developing a framework for the key five areas of the system. Now we're going to pass off the phone. Here's some options.
Yeah, so all the teams here face numerous obstacles and challenges. We highlighted three main ones that we found that our team went through, but also in general, other teams went through as well. First one is team dynamics. A lot of our teams were fairly large in size, nine or even more people. And then keeping the personalities and the working styles together was crucial to the success of every team. Secondly, we had time management. Everybody works on different schedules. Everybody has the obligations that they had throughout the course of the semester. Making sure everybody had a lot of time to be, were productive in the time that they had to fill their roles and responsibilities was also very important. And lastly, complexity. A lot of us, for a lot of us, this might have been the first time that we take on a project this package too. And making sure we take in sort of all the variables that come up during a product like this, and all the variables that we might not have thought of was very important as well. And just taking in everything that we've learned from our studies, vision careers, and even SMAD vision careers, putting them together into one project really was a great learning experience that we all enjoyed today and helped us overcome these obstacles. And now to Mortar, giving you the very closest tips.
We just wanted to take the time to say thank you so much for listening to our overview. Sharp Minds is proud to have been given the opportunity to create a system to lead Madison County officials to the citizens of the state. We want to thank the CIS and SMAD faculty for all their help throughout each sprint. And we would also like to thank Professor Jewett for meeting with us and all the clients for allowing us to complete this project. Thank you.
You chart ones. So the nature of this capstone project, very briefly. Professor Wayne, Professor Fox, and I said the sentence we'll be calling friendly competitive capstone. So every semester, regardless of the number of teams we have, our teams are ranked in terms of how long the system they build, in terms of how well the system solves the problems that my described have. How thorough our solicitation process has been. How much, the ease of use of the systems, intuitive, if the instruction manual tells you this or not. So these teams are ranking many different qualities in terms of the work as they go through the process of the entire system. So as Team Sharp Minds said, when they said, "Just barely, not on the top eight," they mean that. In our last meeting, the fact we met for about an hour and a half trying to determine who would be, you know, the two teams that would move on with this presentation, the quality of work of all of our capstone teams, was so good that it was neck and neck and neck and neck, extremely difficult to say. So thank you, Team Sharp Minds, for overviewing the project and the work that you put on this. So now to move on to the first, what we call our top two team presentations. At the core, as our teams will have 30 minutes to present their system to our judges, our faculty, and our guests, and to the audience. At the 10-minute mark, we will here to each time in that the floor is now open for questions from our judges in back. And I'll hand a microphone to our guest judges in back as they have questions. Sometimes they are suspended due to questions for sure. And I'll put the teams in tune and playing as they get positive, and we'll hear from both teams with the same amount of time. So first up, I'd like to invite Team Transparentate Models at the stage to present their system here.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We are Transparent Technologies. My name is Nicholas Lynch, and I'm the project manager. If you take a look here, there's a QR code that we've got up there that contains our documentation that we have given out in pamphlets for the judges. So if you'd like to scan that right now, I can go ahead and give you guys a little bit of time to do that. And while you guys are scanning, I just, we just wanted to say thank you for everybody for showing up today. And also thank you to the professors and clients for really helping us complete this project. All right. So now we're going to go ahead and move on to some team introductions.
Right. I'm Abigail Leavitt. I'm the client liaison.
I'm Charlotte Newton, and I'm a UX designer.
I'm Danielle Jenner. I'm also a UX designer.
I'm Dragona Colesman. I'm a front-end developer.
I'm Edna Murray. I'm a design developer.
I'm Evan Wilder. I'm a data analyst.
I'm Gabriel Hesmerzky. I'm the UX researcher.
I'm Mary Ann Bruk. I'm a front-end developer.
Tina Heinef, a front-end developer.
I'm Todd, I'm a database developer.
So now we're going to go ahead and give you guys our agenda for this presentation today. So we've already done team introductions, then we're going to hop into some general project, project slash live overview. Then we're going to go over some project, project goals and solutions. And we're going to show off our use case diagram, and I'll add some user personas and user features. Then we're going to hop into our live demonstration. And finally, we're going to detail our next steps that we would say if we can say even the project.
So just to give you guys a brief overview of the project, the listing process of Madison County allows a general conclusion of reports to be used by all citizens and government officials. For the government officials, one of the more centralized and collaborative platforms for planning and budgeting access. To fulfill this aim, our goal was to design a web application that facilities, communication, and collaboration, while also allowing county officials to have access to vital information.
Moving on to our collaborative overview, this project combined computer information systems and the school of media arts and design to create a comprehensive solution. We also conducted regular meetings with both professors and clients to gather insights and ensure my commitment of our project objectives. We also created diagrams to show system architecture and streamline development processes to establish a common team vision. And we followed the prototyping methodology where each stage of the solution was executed and refined to optimize the final product. So going more into detail about prototyping methodology, we start off with requirements gathering. And like I mentioned, we had conducted interviews with both our client and our professors to gather information on what was needed for the solution. We took that information and created a quick design and a prototype, which was then evaluated by our client and our professor. We gained feedback from that evaluation and then refined and prototyped. And the cycle went on for about three sprints, and hopefully then we will be able to implement our product.
So we had a lot of goals. We had a lot of goals for this project. The main one was that we wanted to design a platform where county staff could add and analyze various types of county data. We thought that this would, this would lead to a more strategic planning and overall enhanced decision. Our next goal was to develop a system where we could, county staff could easily navigate to find reports and documents. Lastly, we wanted our website to be user-friendly with visual hierarchy and aesthetically pleasing design. For our project solutions, we wanted to design a system that fulfills both primary and secondary persona goals. We also wanted to resolve user pain points and conduct usability tests, which will expand more on the bigger execution patient. Finally, we wanted to create a more user-friendly interface that was a safe design and prioritized ease of application.
All right. And let's talk about our system. So this is our use case diagram that we developed for our system that we developed for Madison County Government. A use case, a use case diagram basically represents all the different components. And just for an example, this is a real use case. This shows real functional things that all the mass, all the, all the people inside, all the actors in the user needs and actual systems inside of the thing we designed. So one of the things I want to point out to everyone is the main actors you see on the side, of which we have Madison County staff, official sources, institutions, which are our standard users and our admin users. We also have Madison County citizens. You can also view reports inside of, inside of the system that we've developed. One of the key things that you have to keep in mind while looking at this is this diagram represents functional and non-functional requirements in part of the system. Functional requirements are basically just the actual things you can do inside of the system, like going through and accessing workspaces and working through it. While our non-functional things are the things you would expect to see inside of any system, whether it be just logging in or just the efficiency of the system once again.
So to create impactful brand, we decided to focus on the logo and its colors. We also incorporated additional colors in particular workspaces to ensure a successful user navigation.
As Tina mentioned earlier, we conducted usability testing. But what exactly is usability testing? It's a formal testing that allows users to sit down and navigate through the system themselves and will provide them with very little instruction as we observe how they are using the system and see what struggles they may face so we can make the necessary changes in order to create a product that is easy to use and meets the client's needs. Over the last few weeks, we were able to conduct testing on Madison County staff members Jim Jewett and Jonathan Wheatley, our primary and secondary personas. They completed tasks they would do in their everyday workday. And to see specifics of all those tasks that they were asked to do, you can refer to page 17 of the documentation. Specific changes made to the system from usability testing will be further discussed and shown in the live demonstration soon.
This is our secondary persona. So those that don't know, a secondary persona is not representative of the majority of users, but rather a subsection of individuals for specific tasks. The one who holds Jonathan Wheatley. This is our secondary persona. He's a 44-year-old county administrator for Madison County. He is high in our name, is ready to turn in with his work and his tasks. He has an interest in the management of management information and projections and collaborating with other community officials. He's frustrated with the previous system and applications and ability to easily review past managers' advantage from continued provision. He hopes the new system can seamlessly create future expenditure projections and anything past budgets and budgets.
Since Jonathan Wheatley is a county administrator, he will have all the normal capabilities that the state of the country will have. But he will also be able to manage users, their workspaces, their passwords, and also be able to edit certain information too. That should be really helpful to a live demonstration to demonstrate these actions.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'll be representing Jonathan Wheatley in our live walkthrough. So once I log into the system, there's just three tasks that I want to complete once I did the site. The first is that I want to onboard a new user into our system. The second being that I want to update some user credentials that we need to change from our previous users. They've forgotten their password, et cetera. And then the final thing we want to do is navigate into our central repositories so we can find some documents that have been uploaded that we just want to take a quick little look at. So the first thing I'm going to do is log on it.
As you can see on the screen, each workspace has a corresponding color. From feedback in our usability testing, we found that it was difficult to differentiate the five different workplaces. The corresponding color will be at the top of each page related to its workspace. By finding specific colors, the user can now have instant contextual awareness, be able to immediately identify what workspace they're in without having to think twice. You'll also see the minimalist tab bar at the very top of the page. Originally being completely full, cluttered, and hard to digest, we chose to compress that information by adding dropdowns for different navigations. With the now creative states, we're able to insert buttons such as logout or go back, which will be visible on other pages of the system, from clients request for clear and simple navigation. Lastly, not visible on the screen are the bug fixes we made after the system crashed during our first testing. We were able to have found these mistakes and have now implemented new alerts stating any errors that they occur. And if an entry field is left, it now says in red, "This field is required", allowing the system to stay running even when user error occurs. Now, let's get back to the demonstration.
Thank you. So the first thing that we want to do is that first task of onboarding a new user. So we're going to quickly navigate into user staff as you see right here. And now this is just the central repository that holds all of the current users in our system. So I'm just going to add a new user. And once I do this, I'm just going to quickly fill out And once I do this, I'm just going to quickly fill out this form by clicking this populate button you see down here at the bottom. These populate buttons are just for show during this demonstration. They allow me in the actual system, it's just to quickly fill them out while representing. So as I enter his password, all I'm going to do is sign him up. And now Matt Damon has been added to our register. So I'm going to quickly assign him to the budgeting area by flipping on some actions and going into the workspace and assigning him to the budgeting workspace. Now that I've done that, I've heard that my colleague, Mr. Jewett, has forgotten his password. So I'm going to quickly navigate to him and update his password really quickly. So I'm going to make it something nice and secure, like password.
Containing the floor is on the questions, should I lose that link from the road, yes?
Thank you. And next, we're just going to quickly update his email address by editing his functions. Going to just quickly change it because we had an actually incorrect email, just going to quickly switch it to his JMU email so we can contact him more easily. And now that's been updated, the next thing I'm going to want to do is move on to my final task. We're going to navigate to the central repository in our file libraries. We're just going to look for some different information items in the information library. So the item that I'm looking for is in the budgeting workspace. The first thing I want to do is filter it to the budgeting workspace. And once I do that, I'm going to look for a specific SWOT analysis. And then I've done that, I'm going to take a quick look inside of the document. And now that I can see it, this is the SWOT analysis that was created by Mr. Jewett. And after looking over it, it appears to be the right document, so now I believe I've completed most of my tasks today. So I'm going to log out, we're going to go over our primary users, users coming down.
So removing all requirements now, and what is a requirement? It is a representation, the majority of users are going to interact with this stuff. So here we have Jim Jewett, and he is our requirement person. He is sixty-four years old and he is on the board of supervisors. His motivation is part of using the platform to interact with other officials and manage that. He can be described as dedicated and task-focused. When using the last process, you know there was a lack of tools that search for us now precise. Jim hopes to have ease when locating documents, run regression analysis and be able to accomplish strategic planning on the new system.
Uh, since Jim Jewett is a standard user, uh, we'll see the actions, get the keyboard, be able to view in our system, which are login, use workspaces, create informational items, upload datasets, run analyses on those datasets and post a report for all of the information kept during his workday. Uh, next, we'll get to a live demonstration to ensure that.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am Jim Jewett. I'm very excited to be here. And I have some tasks that I have to complete today, and I'm going to share with you now. Uh, so the first thing that I'm just going to do is log into the system. Uh, and I'm already excited because I'm greeted with my beautiful face, my favorite hat, ready to get started. Uh, so there's some quick links to my workspaces, which are associated with departments that I'm a part of with the Madison County Government. Uh, everything that I want to do today is going to be budgeting department. So I'm going to click into there. And I'm greeted with all the plans associated with this department. Uh, the first thing I want to do is create a new plan, uh, just to kind of streamline our meeting process for 2024. Uh, so I'm going to name it as such, I'm going to create that. Uh, and then I'm going to click into that to see the steps for this plan. Uh, and I'm going to add a couple of steps for the first and second meeting. Um, just to kind of streamline our, our process here. So I'm going to create those. And once I do that, the next thing I want to do today is create a new information item to give this department a little bit more context. Uh, so I'm going to move to the information items and I'm going to create a new item. Uh, I'm going to create this as a SWOT analysis, um, just to give a little more, uh, information about the strengths and weaknesses, both internally and externally for this department, and I'm going to create that. All right. The next thing I need to do is upload a file that's on my local machine, uh, to allow Matt Damon to use in a little bit. Uh, so I'm going to navigate to the file share here, and I'm going to upload that file. Now this file is, uh, it's about twenty twenty-three, uh, car accidents in Madison County. Uh, so I'm going to name it as such, I'm going to give it a good description, and then I'm going to upload that Excel document right here. I'm asking for it to allow anyone in this department to view and download that file. Now that I've done that, I'm going to let everyone know that my task has been completed by looking over the chat and typing in something like I added in the prompt, so that everyone in my department knows that there's a new file in that repository. Uh, so now I did that, I'm going to log out, and I'm going to pass it over to Matt Damon to go over some of his tasks.
All right, hello, everybody. I am Matt Damon. After an illustrious career, I've decided to become a member of Madison County staff. So I'm going to log in with the new account that was created by Mr. Jonathan Wheatley earlier, and that's who I'm greeted with. So as I can see here, I've already been assigned to be budgeting workspace, and I don't have a profile picture. So I want to go ahead and upload a profile picture to really just give my account some room. So I'm going to choose iPhoto. I'm going to preview this photo and upload my profile picture. After that, I'm going to go ahead and edit my workspace. Out of my workspace, I want to go ahead and check the chat to see what is going on inside the workspace. As I can see here, recently, uh, my colleague Jim Jewett wrote, he added a file to file share. So I'm going to go ahead and navigate to file share and see what this file is. As I can see here, it is a Madison County car crash that I have in this data about these crashes, and it is an Excel file type. So I'm going to go ahead and download this file. Now that I downloaded this file, I'm going to go ahead and upload it as a dataset so I can perform some analysis on it. So I'm going to navigate to datasets, and now I'm going to hit, I'm going to hit create a new dataset. I'm going to fill out the rest of the fields here with, uh, fitting titles. And then I can go ahead and choose the file that I want to upload. Once that file is uploaded, I can see it's been added to the dataset list in the library view. And once I click into the file, I can see the data that is inside the dataset. And once I'm in here, I can go ahead, I'm going to run some analysis on this data. So I'm going to go ahead and run this simulation. Right here, I am prompted to select a field to run this simulation on. It will, this, uh, this page will only show numerical fields. And right now, the only numerical field in my dataset was number of crashes. So once I click create here, it's going to prompt me to enter my name or enter the name of the analysis. And how many iterations that I want on, which I want one thousand in this certain case. And the distribution type, which I'm going to go with exponential, because I'm really looking to get some worst-case scenarios to see really just, uh, how, how bad crashes could get. And then once you enter into the crash simulation, you can see here the visualization, visualization in this screen format, which shows the number of occurrences, uh, of the result of each of the iterations. And then, uh, you can see the information in the top left here. You can see when it was created, who created it, the reference dataset, the field that's tested, the mean, the iterations and the type of distribution. You can also see under there, there's a link information tab, which will be, uh, previewed later. And then there's a percentage of outcomes in each range, which has the ranges. So the way that this diagram is formatted, it has, um, certain ranges of a certain iteration that. So pretty much, or it has certain ranges of whenever these outcomes fall in them, it'll show, it will add one to it. And this is a percentage of the amount of times, uh, each iteration about on there. So after this, I want to go ahead and, uh, make another analysis item on a different dataset that was uploaded earlier. Uh, this dataset is Excel upload Tyler export, which is actually, uh, an export from the Madison County budgeting department that was provided to us earlier. And if you scroll through here, you can see the, uh, data here, and I'm going to go ahead and run a progression analysis on this. So here I'm prompted to select my independent field and my dependent field. For my independent field, I want to select my, I want to select twenty twenty-two revised budget. And then for the dependent field, I want to go ahead and select twenty twenty-two ratios. So I can compare based on what we put for our revised budget, what is predicted for our actual budget to be. So I'm going to go ahead and click create here. And I'm prompted to enter a name, and you can see the rest of the information in disabled text boxes below, so you can check out that. And then whenever you hit create, it's loaded back into the analysis list library, and I can see, uh, and I can click into it right now. And whenever you are, whenever you click into a regression analysis, you are greeted with a scatter plot with all of the data and a line of best fit going through it. And on the left, you have your analysis details, which includes your slope, your intercept and your R-square. You also have a section where you can enter an test value. They calculate, and then another dot will pop up on the scatter plot with the predicted point. And, uh, now I want to add some context to this analysis, so I'm going to go ahead and hit link to information item. This takes me to the create information item page. I'm going to go ahead and populate this with some relevant, uh, information about this analysis. When I hit creating link, they'll take me back to the information, uh, list, and I can go in and give my information to them. And I can see that it is linked to this specific analysis. And, uh, down in the.
I've got a couple of questions from our judge on this one right now. For this one, uh, with the file upload demonstration, what's an administrator want to more wrangle when we control the permissions and access to that file?
Um, the way you can, uh, control permissions and access to that file is, um, right now, whenever you upload a file in a certain workplace, it will save within that workplace. So the real control that we have right now is it's compartmentalized by workspace. So if somebody even say that's in the human resources department, will not be able to access files in the budgeting department.
Actually, thank you. I'm just going to get one more question from her in here right now. Uh, she's interested in hearing more about the choice to have the users' passwords manually changed versus sending the user themselves a link to change the password themselves. Are there security guidelines that outline how that would be handled with, well, people now knowing the password?
Um, our, our thought was that it would just be a little more secure, just having one person, uh, entering that information. Uh, the password changing is only accessible by those admin users. So, um, Jonathan Wheatley, uh, anyone, anyone else that, uh, should be very well trusted with the Madison County, uh, government. Uh, so we don't see very many, uh, security issues from that.
Thank you.
All right, continuing on with the demonstration, as you can see, the information I have created has now appeared in the link to information section in the analysis. So after I've done this, I've created my analysis, I'm going to go ahead and go into the chat to note about the rest of my colleagues, what I've done. I'll type a nice message to let them know that I just uploaded two analysis, uh, two analysis. And with that being done, I can go ahead and log out and, uh, get it back to Dr. Jewett to go ahead and do some more work.
I thought I was done for the day, but, uh, Matt Damon was really quick creating those analyses. So I have to log in and create reports off those analyses, uh, to allow our citizens to view that information. Uh, so everything there is in the budgeting department, I know that. Uh, I'm going to, now we can go to the chat, uh, just to make sure that, uh, everything was uploaded and Matt Damon says everything's uploaded directly, um, so I'm going to create that. I'm going to go to the report library and create a new report. Uh, I'm going to, if you probably just find there, I'm going to select some other items to give this report a little more context. And then I'm going to select the analysis that I want to give that off. That's the revised visuals, I'm going to create that. And this is what I'm reading, this is basically what these citizens are going to see, that, uh, kind of contextual information there. Uh, and while we scroll down the, uh, the visualization there. Uh, so when I scroll down a little bit more, I'm greeted with a button that says post report. Uh, this is how I'm actually going to be, uh, shown to our citizens. And once I click that, it's officially live for everyone, uh, in the county. So let's just take a look at this report right now. Uh, again, everything's pretty much the same here. Uh, the one big difference is that generate PDF button in the top right. Uh, clicking that will allow me to download this report as PDF to have on my local machine, uh, to maybe do some light reading on it. I can do whatever I want with it. Uh, but now that I did that, I'm going to pass it over to a Madison County citizen to, uh, look at that.
So as a Madison County citizen, I'm greeted with this page where I can see any report that has been uploaded by county staff. And I can click into a report and download it to my local computer and meeting. Now that we've watched a live demonstration of our system, what are the benefits of this? The first benefit is that it enables users to strategically plan and improve collaboration and communication. There's also now an ease of locating documents, which saves time and boosts productivity. And now there's a centralized system to manage workspaces and user information as before if I did not have a centralized system. And overall, our system is user-friendly and is easy to navigate for our features. So what would be next for Transparent Technologies, if you could keep where it goes? Well, first, I wanted to talk to you guys about cost analysis. Currently, our site is running on Azure, which is a cloud-based platform, and it's a PaaS basis. But in the future, it could be run on various different types of platforms. In the future, we would also like to do a more detailed cost analysis, so that county staff can know. Looking more specifically into the features of the system, we want to implement push notifications, which will allow users to see exactly what's going on in their workspace and with real-time updates and alerts. Here I can see that Professor Jewett has posted a new information item in my workspace. Next, we want to incorporate multi-factor authentication. This allows me to see exactly where, what time, on what computer and what user's trying to log into my account. And we can either accept, I can either accept or deny this request. And this will enhance the security of our system. During usability testing with Mr. Wheatley, he mentioned that having an FAQ tab would be very useful for users of the system, so they can go and get a refresh and bring in questions that they may have. In the future, we would want to implement this by conducting surveys and research to find out exactly what parts of the system may be a little bit confusing to users and what parts are most crucial for new and existing users to, to know. Uh, lastly, we want to implement a recycling bin feature. This is where all deleted items, such as plans, dataset, analysis, can be stored. And users can go in and either permanently delete this item or restore it, and it can serve as a backup for deleted items. Thank you, and we'll now take any questions.
I have one question from Professor Urban. She says, I'm curious on the follow-up palette and whether the web content accessibility guidelines were consulted for content ratios and/or if the system currently meets any of the WCAG guidelines.
That is secondly, in this discussion, in future iterations, we actually want to solve. As far as the layer sequencing, um, those collections are spaced off, the sites of the website will be thought, you're asking, is it for users to have distinct variants between them to differentiate between workspaces? Originally, in, in previous iterations, we were able to customize these colors to whatever the user desired. You know, this would lead to confusion, the entire idea of workspace colors was to create distinct colors associated with a distinct area. So that is definitely a great consideration for contributions, absolutely. Thank you.
Great job, guys, for your presentation. Um, I wanted to ask a little bit about, um, from the admin side, is there really you can search for users? Because let's say you have, you know, more users playing the database, and you know that, and then search for that. And then as well on the citizen side, um, once there are multiple reports, whether followed up, is there a way to search for those? Um, and then in recycling bin, would there be like a archive section, um, for purposes of retaining this sort of power and creation?
Uh, for your first two questions, uh, I definitely think that that will be a good idea, uh, in future iterations. Uh, right now, I can give a pretty good grasp on how many users are going to be in the system. I don't think it's going to be like a crazy amount, um, so that's not, uh, necessarily a priority. Uh, but it's definitely something that we could look at in the future.
Um, yeah, for the recycle bin, this would just an idea for the future, but when we actually start implementing it, we would conduct more usability testing research to find out exactly what they would want for this future. to find out exactly what they would want for this feature.
Yes, that's a good representation. What's your perspective on us to implement at scale and to operate support the system long-term?
Currently, we really haven't done too in-depth of a cost analysis yet. So we don't have figures on that yet, but we are definitely looking to do that in the future.
I want to ask that question. I correctly mentioned we are using Azure, which is a cloud-based service. And that one is a subscription service. So we're not sure exactly how it would go off on a government level. But there are also different platforms that this can be posted on as people thought it may be best.
And it's going to depend on how robust Madison County wants the system to be, how much data might be in the system, how secure do you want that, and how clean do you want that data to be?
Can I speak back to one of the questions earlier? Is there an exception to security on file size, that minimizes and maximizes? Would that cause the system to increase when you upload a file?
I mean, we haven't tested it on territory files. I know it accepts any file type. But no, we haven't tested that. No, there's no restriction.
Hi, very nice presentation. Thank you, system. I'd like to look at the, well, quite a lot of the, like, servers. So if you can somehow open the user's diagram and you're person as one or the other both. Thank you. So you have basically three different types of users. So what is that standard user, consistent, and even universal? Yeah, I'm confused when I look at this and also your user personas presented here. There are two user personas, primary person, secondary person. I didn't see any person, citizen, can you explain? While the citizen system, I mean, instead of you to relate to primary and secondary persons.
Sure. So to be the age of standard, rest of the, primary, secondary, persona, we consider, we did originally have citizens' point of view and persona on that basis. We wanted to be specific within these two primaries. A citizen absolutely is an integral part of the system and it's definitely something to be considered in the ecosystem. But as far as creating personas, we're going in on what specific primary individuals using the software needed and required. That's why I started to just add.
Okay, so just to make sure I answered correctly, your focus was on the internal users of the system, which I may have contemplated. Now, for the citizens' side users, but as far as user experience, user interface, not too much mentioned there. At this stage of the drawing.
Correct. And then again, moving forward, absolutely user testing will be done with the system. But yes, we primarily did research and usability testing.
Thank you. So what does standard user do in this system? Because they don't seem to do any statistics.
A standard user does everything that a macro staff user does. So basically, how they set this up is a standard user and a system admin inherit every use case from that top step figure on the left, macro staff, who can monitor the system, access all those workspaces, maybe update that creative plan, create information item, and do those reports. And then the system administrator has some additional chips.
Okay, very good. And can we take what our end-to-end relationship diagram, that's where we're going. Very interesting to make a lot of. So can you explain to me what's a native system plan and plan steps?
Yeah, so these are, this is everything that goes into the what we call the sysplan table within the database. This is, this is used in the plan repository that we showed off a little bit in our walkthrough. We have a unique identifier there, plan ID, plan name. And then plan content, which is just a description of that plan, the date that that plan was created, and then a syntax for if the plan was deleted or not. That is to delete it once that plan is deleted, and then it won't be seen in the, in the actual system. And then there are many plan steps contained within a sysplan. There's a maximum of many, minimum of one. And the data that is in that is another unique identifier, plan step ID, step data, which is the information of that step. And then who posted that step, what plan it's related to, and then the status, same thing, is it deleted?
Okay, thank you. So go ahead and describe the plan and sys of steps.
Yes.
Okay. Who creates the system plan? What user? Is it the standard people who create system plan and steps?
We go back to the, to the use case. So that, that is a whole group of macro staff through the workspaces. And that is inherited by both standard user and systematic. So.
So create a plan is the use case who created the system plan, right?
The create plan use case right there, which extends the workspace, is accessible by both standard and system.
Thank you. Now, so a staff member can create a plan. And sometimes have a step. Is that accurate understanding?
Yeah, yeah, they can create a plan if they want to. Same thing, they can create an information item if they want to. But accessing a workspace doesn't require them to create.
So a plan does not need to have a step? Or if this one's created, it may not have a step?
Sure, yes.
Okay, can I go back to your D R P? So according to this model, as a system, but not something that this one's step. How can be done through your use cases, your real use cases?
It's definitely something that we're going to have to take into consideration and update our end-to-end relationship diagram to better influence our system.
So that would be good.
Thank you.
Our chalk between screens are getting the roots. Okay, kind of different tells and some of your just questions. If the Mac out or the chat has access to workspaces, they can create a plan. System admin looks like they have control over creating workspace. So I'm thinking specific, you may have collaboration between, you know, and the department. Sometimes there's needs for other departments. So if one man and staff needs to upload a report, say it's a zoning report or something of that nature, they only put that in the space. I guess I could say save that in space. Do there are assigned workspaces, meaning I have to assign each group, whether it's to the B source or something? They can only upload their work to that assigned space.
Well, we set it off the workspaces like that for security purposes. We don't really want people that aren't in the zoning department to see that information. But yeah, yeah, in the report, sorry, in the workspace is where you create that report. That answer your question?
Yes, yes. Also, in your next steps, that means that need to be created or had to be created. Has it been, has it been implemented or? That's something that Macau. Paris is, we would.
Just to add on to your first question about adding to it, when we spoke with, when you were doing user testing with Dr. Jewett, we had to discuss it, and he wanted it to be more siloed compared to having everyone have access to all the different workspaces in the department. So while speaking with Dr. Jewett, we decided to make it more siloed for each department's structure of files. And when it comes to the document, to the request for the, I forgot, Anna, thank you. We have to take that into consideration moving forward.
It's not correct.
Okay. And then going to another prior question, it says to deal with size of storage that lives in the space. What would prompt a user even to admin levels to know that we're kind of near capacity? I know in some of our D R P systems, generally you see that about when the system becomes all dense. Is there any kind of prompt that lets you know if you're at max capacity for storage or?
Currently in the system, there's no alert from the website. Si, the system is near capacity, but currently we're using it through Azure services. So Microsoft Azure Cloud does have a robust tool that tracks the information that is stored inside of it currently. So it's.
I'm curious, you didn't incorporate generative AI in your application. Did you at least know on your view as to future availability of performance for using generative AI deployed in this application?
I believe one of the requirements and sort of things that we.
No, we did not really, when developing the system, we really did not consider too much of the generative AI. We just didn't really see it as. I know it's going to be, it's definitely going to be a big thing soon, but we really didn't see it for a project of this scale currently. That's the something that's really going to just affect it that much.
I'm playing a role in that. I'm interested to hear about what notifications the system has. For example, with chat features, a user notified they're not currently logged into the system.
One of our next steps that we wanted to implement was the push notification to alert you if you're not logged in. So that's one of our next steps. Currently, it is not a barrier if you're not.
Thank you. Finally, we have to use the ability testing, which will identify your local prototype and your high-end template, which will be able to overcome or identify that will be necessary to avoid a significant problem.
So the biggest implication that we made was the colors on the nav bar. Prior, we just had the title there and we didn't show that we were networking in a workspace. So implementing the colors to specific workspaces was a huge one, as well as detailing our nav bar and inserting search bars into the knowledge libraries. But overall, we made it was just really differentiating which section or workspace the user was in is the biggest thing that we changed and were probably most successful with. But other than that, we also implicated some buttons that allowed the user to exit workspace. Because prior, it kind of seemed a little confusing. But per usability testing, we were receiving feedback about making sure that that was an easy navigation app.
Yeah, additionally, the users that we tested on typically kind of took the path of least resistance. So to say when creating those items, they would maybe fill out a field and that would, that would have some error. So we updated that just to make sure that, you know, the system should never break or anything like that. And I did a big job of mixing those in the sheet with anyone.
Another one, Professor Irvin. I'm also interested to hear about what browser testing was conducted. Government computers can often be restricted in terms of browser use. So it would be important to know what browsers the system is compatible with.
I believe they're compatible, it's compatible on all systems. We actually have a variety of different computers that we all have. And I know that it runs perfectly well on all of ours, as well as those who we conducted usability testing on. I'm not exactly sure what type of desktop they use, but based on our, we did it over Zoom. So we were able to screen share and screen record. And it seemed to be working fine for them, other than just like our own bug fixes that we needed to change. But everything looked pretty smooth on all of our variety of computers. And we're really pleasantly surprised and happy with that.
We know for a fact that there's one Chrome, Edge, Safari. It's accessible on mobile app or on mobile phone through Safari, through whatever Android has. But it doesn't look great. After talking with our Madison County clients, we decided that that wasn't a feature that was terribly necessary early on. But on the desktop, it should work, at least positively for Chrome, Edge, and Safari.
What about manipulation of data once it's gone into the analysis? We see it on a regular basis, but the total family use budget is just the item. We know we have a larger total sum, but lots of departments were much, much smaller. When you did these analysis, everybody likes to graph the continually stimulating. But a lot of them are subsets of things that we're identifying into different kind of analysis are much smaller than the range scope. Is there an ability to pull back with those parameters available? Or do you have to enter a whole new worksheet?
More than likely, you have to enter a new worksheet. Are you talking about the parameters that come out of the, so like the mean standard deviation? So currently, they are stored in the system currently. So whenever you open it up, it will store the mean standard deviation for each of the analysis items. But currently, the only, the only way you can really be able to work with them is by linking the knowledge items to them to really provide context. And the rest of the work would have to be done in Excel in terms of like major calculations or anything like that. We really wanted with the analysis, we wanted it not to, I guess, not really give all the answers, but we were really looking to make it as a tool within the system. A way that you can upload a data set and then use these tools that are provided to create some, to create some sort of analysis to be able to get context from.
It was, it was agreed on pretty early on that any manipulation of any seller C S P documents would be done. And at least like deleting sensitive data, creating some of the deals, anything like that. Yeah, that was, that was decided almost by our first meeting.
One more question to Gentry and Gentry Technologies. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Gentry and Gentry Technologies. So if you aren't scheduled, we know this is a squishy time for next questions. We need to unload and hear questions from our judges. Yes, especially if you're a little slightly induced in these case, not a nice level. Okay, without further ado, next. Our other second option team, I'd like to invite Valavision, if you wouldn't say, and let's see your system, your work. Amazing that you've done. Valavision.
So thank you all for your patience. A little more time, I'll be meeting with team ValuVision.
All right, thank you everyone. So I don't want to reveal the announcement. We are taking value vision, which is in our cloud communication today. I'd like you all to take your phone back if you don't have a printed packet out for the view. For the next two slides, we will have to do our product, we like follow up. On our, our point, we will be referencing each slide. So without further ado, my name is Heather Ward. I'm the product manager for this team.
I'm Tom Hightower, I'm the data analyst.
I'm Alexandra Byerson, I'm the paper designer.
I'm Nick Patterson, I'm also a data analyst.
I'm Jessica Shambly, I'm based on in Full Stack of Villa.
My name is Tom Astro, I'm just a good third.
I'm Rachel Gordon, I'm the graphic designer.
Alex Song, very special designer.
I'm Constance Simmons, I'm a full stack developer.
I'm Keri Yatra, I'm a full stack developer. We are valued.
Now to get started today, we're going to be going through a quick overview of our projects, what our goals were, as well as methodology. We then will be showing our analytical models, as well as user research personas, and then going for a live demonstration, as well as what we would like to implement and bring forward, and then accumulate such.
So Madison County is currently facing a challenging financial landscape where there's increasing cost burdens, but also relatively stagnant revenue stream. So what's missing is a unified system that would enable Madison County to uh, uh, enable long-term planning. Uh, one that would better the Madison County community and improve economic development initiatives. And I'm gonna pass it back to Heather.
So the methodology that we use to go through and walk through this whole system is an agile approach to collect screen programming. These are based off of the core fundamentals of communication, simplicity, feedback, encourage. Now, a dive deeper, throughout our development cycle and through coding and coding process, we try to use simple measures, as well as test-driven development. Through collaborative engagement with stakeholders, as well as with students, professors, we met regularly to make sure that we were abiding to the needs of Madison County. Now you can see here, there are 10 of us, which is great for XP and its collaborative environment. We met also regularly in person to make sure that we were in collaborative space, making sure we were problem solving together. We did plan for the future and sustainable growth of this software, not only by using the periodic learning practices. So one device to people, we're making sure that we're thinking through problems faster and we're playing for the future. So now next, it's going to go over our software and system goals.
Thank you. Uh, and here we have some of our goals that we went over to make sure we met all the project requirements and adaptants Madison County's needs throughout the project. Uh, we believe that following these goals throughout the project will help Madison County transition over to our new automated system for planning if they want to. And our goal broadly is to make the system intuitive, scalable, compliant, intricate, and secure. We realize that these goals are important to us, but the clients' needs are obviously number one priority. And the number one need the client is telling us throughout the process was for an analytical model that was accurate and told them spending projections that they could use in the future. And now I'll hand it off to Jessica to do analytical.
So adhering to the extreme programming, extreme programming methodology, it includes iterations and trying things out when these are testing. Our first attempt was a linear regression. As you can see in the graph on the right, this looks like what you might expect for uh, the behavior of expenses. But in reality, it's a little more complex than that. Some of the things that our first attempt is missing is what you see on the left-hand side. For example, it assumes a linear regression where for every change in the independent variable causes the exact same change on the dependent. This misses some of the behavior of the parameters, like the inflation rate, for example, it comp counts and it's possible to explain later. Another thing is it forces the users to guess inflation. So just by putting in the inflation rate in, you're estimating what if reality inflation rate is actually more unknown than that. So uh, third, interest rate as a parameter is a little irrelevant and statistically insignificant, we found, because Madison County is neither wants to be in the future either. A borrower or a lender, so it's low relevant. And lastly, it does not show another one of the requirements Madison County brought to our attention, which is a range. So rather than show that specific figure, it's missing a range of expected figures. So now I'm gonna pass on to Moss to explain our second iteration.
All right, so after recovering some of this, we just did a per separation, uh, really went back to the drawing. So we met with professors in the business analytics department, I'll be member decline again. And basically trying to figure out, right, what, how would these parameters and these base effect expenditures? So some of the changes in the name were first, we use exponential expression. And we changed our underlying raising to exponential expression. And this is because if you think about the way that raise back expenditure, it's actually an exponential relationship, that's fixed to the compound effect. So a second big change was that we basically removed the inflation rate as one of the parameters. And so now we have a feature where we'll automatically calculate inflation. And so it does this by looking at 38 historical inflation rates from 1983 to 2012. And we'll randomly select for each year that you project, we'll randomly select from those 38 inflation rates. And then we will calculate the related sub, sub category expenditure, as well as the total category, sorry, total expenditure uh, for each projection given. The cool thing about our system is that it will repeat this process 1,000 times. And after it does the 1,000 months, we will look at the middle 95% range in which the expenditure is lot. And then that is going to show the output that you see in the graph where you have the upper confidence limit in orange, you have the total expenditure average in blue. And then you have the lower confidence limit shown in the green. So I think you notice we don't put in some interest rate in this modeling. And as Jessica mentioned, that is because, you know, after talking to our clients more, we figured out that they are either a borrower or a vendor. So that means that using interest rate as a predictor for expenditure is rolling. Uh, and then of course, we have the 95% confidence range. But another thing I want to mention is that although we added to feature where you can automatically calculate inflation rate. We still have a feature where you can just check your box to manually set inflation. And this allows a user to test, uh, you know, timing, economic instability, where they can really check whatever inflation rate is while. See how that is gonna affect their sort of expenditure. Moving on. Of course, after developing this new model, we wanted to test it. And the way we did that is by going back in time and we fed our model 2011 historical expenditure data. And we projected five years into the future, can we compare it to how well it actually predicted? So as you can see in the graph on the left, that the actual historical expenditure data armed by the black X's falls exactly within the 95% confidence range that we projected. To show that it is in fact accurate. Now, while 2011 to 2016 uh, was actually the time of, you know, where the economy was relatively stable. We want to see what would happen if we tried to use our model, uh, you know, trying to predict into the pandemic, but obviously the economy uh, was not stable. And so for this projection, the two-year projection, that is 2019 uh, historical expenditure data. And basically by estimating the anomaly amount, by implementing the manual inflation rate, we were able to come up with this uh, projection. That showed an average total expenditure that means it's pretty close to the actual balance. So this shows that not only is our model accurate, but it is also highly adaptable to changing economic conditions. So that's a little bit about four of the power functionality. Now, I'm going to pass it over to Thomas, who can talk about overall functionality and the users that use this.
Thanks so much. So right here, we've got our use case diagram. This is a detailed functional use case diagram that has the functional features of the user goals and the use cases. So as you can see, we have two user roles, one being the government official and the other one being the citizen. We then want to look at just the government official first. So they can access a government initiative, and that is what we define as three functional areas that has been counted one. Uh, and that will be the uh, budget planning, the admin renew, and the economic development. And so in the budget process, which is the one we're most uh, trying to do, is we can view the source of spending, add update spending projections, and then add update revenue projections. And now as a citizen, they are able to view the published report where they can come, where it comes from the government official and then goes, they determine the access rights of those documents. And in there, then a citizen can view the published report. And now I'll pass it to Alexandra for user research.
Team the floor is out, let's switch our guests to judges and pack.
Um, so conducting user research was super important in not only identifying the problems that Madison County is facing, but also understanding the needs of our individual users. So at the beginning of this project, we conducted a survey with eight members of Madison County to really understand their complaints and their expectations for this project. Once we started building the system, we learned, um, or we met with the Madison County representatives, we agreed to ensure that we will meet our expectations, as in also including a positive user experience. Next, um, sorry, next, uh, we conducted user testing to see how our system was functioning with our mind. And through user testing, we were able to recognize frustrations and also confusion within the system. And with our user research, we were able to gain a lot of improvements, including a drop down arrow that indicates a hidden list. Third, finding tips, which is basically there's an information icon, and if you hover over it, it should be more recognition. And then also simplifying our development process with a safety measure.
Now, a quick question from Professor Vermon, is the government official the same as the system administrator?
No, they're not. But in the functional user goals, we wanted to define just the functional one, which is the government official. The uh, the admin is not technically part of the function.
Thank you. Now, we're going to be handing the words to Alex, but I need you to.
Thank you, Alexandra. For the visual design, we need a lot of feedback from our professors and the client alike. We established early on a primary and secondary color palette, and we identified through user testing the need for more colors to differentiate all this within our system. So we created the conditional and then the graph color palette. As you can see in the example, the task manager above, that's where we use the conditional colors to identify different statuses of the tasks, such as in progress, to do, or complete. And then for the graphs, we wanted to really emphasize certain categories such as public safety, so that's why we chose these colors. And then the font that Madison County currently uses on their website is the font family Monstera, and we wanted to implement this to meet the whole branding. Now it has to allow to reach one.
Thank you. So based on all of our user research, we created three personas, which are fictional representatives of our users. Our primary persona is Ryan Thompson, who represents government official. Next, we have Timothy Grayson, the system administrator. And lastly, our tertiary persona is Ivica Elson, who represents a Madison County citizen. Performing as these personas, we will be doing live walkers of our system today. But first, let's get to the Ryan a bit better. As the government official, Ryan has the abilities to collaborate on initiatives, run statistical analysis, raise teaching proposed developments, and track historical spending revenue. Here you can see Ryan's user journey map. Today, his goal is to evaluate Madison County's uh, financial future. These tasks detail the steps people take to navigate through the system and complete all the steps. Now to Moss, so perform as Ryan to demonstrate how a government official sees our system.
Okay, so I'm going to be acting as Ryan, uh, who is a government official. And after assessing the system, you're first across the government official homepage. And you can see the resource library with a few resources that have been published, but curious to talk about them more later. So for now, I want to do so, and top right corner and log on. All right, next to my credentials. Above. All right, so this will bring you to what we're calling the initiatives page. Uh, basically, after talking to the client, we discovered that the main operations can be broken down into three main initiatives. Budget process, economic development, and administrative review. Now, the reason why I often show elements because of Brian, I've been assigned to all three of them, so that's how they should work. Um, as I mentioned, you know, I'm mainly concerned with the budget process for now, so I'm going to go ahead and click on the budget process. Okay, so this is going to bring you to what we call the dashboard page. And that's what page shows all the pages for the features that have been activated for this specific initiative. So good if you want to click on any of these pages, but actually for now, I'm more concerned with the scroll to the top. And seeing that I have one notification, um, click on that and see I have a task to do, so I'm going to click on it. So this is going to bring me to the uh, task manager page, that is within the budget process initiative. And so what is the task manager page? Okay, so the task manager is now like a project management tool at the time. Uh, you can basically see all the tasks that are active in the initiative. And then over on the right, you can see on my tasks, all the tasks that have been signed to a specific user, so Ryan is a person, so I'm going to run it. Uh, I, if I could, if I wanted to, I could uh, add a task, but for now, what we don't want to do is just click on the task that has already been assigned to me. So when you click on a task, you see further task detail, like the name, who's assigned to, the due date, uh, status, and description. So I can see through the description here, my task is to compare a five-year revenue projection with a five-year spending projection. So I'm going to start that, I'm going to change the status to in progress, and then I'm going to update that task. As you can see, that changed the colors, and that was organizing the in-progress section, um, combination here. So I'm going to navigate to the gray editor, uh, which you can see, same thing as the data page, it has all of the pages or features that have been activated for this initiative. So I'm going to click on revenue projection. Now, as you can see on this page, there are a number of different parameters that a user has to input in order to run the projection. These parameters basically represent the growth rate within different revenue streams that form in Madison County. So for example, at the top, we have real estate tax plate. So I'm going to say, and I think that this real estate tax is going to grow, I would say 6%. I think personal property tax is going to grow, I would say 5%. And I think these licenses are going to grow by, I would say, 4%. And then total state funding now, this is how much Virginia gives to Madison County, let's say 8 million dollars. And then we want to do a five-year projection, so simply just go to like five, and we're going to run the projection. So as you can see, the four charts are now populated with the projected revenue data. You can see over on the left, you have 2023, which should be latest historical year, plus five projection years. Over on the uh, right, you can see that this is the total revenue projection data, but broken down by those parameter guides. So like the uh, real estate tax, the personal property tax, these licenses tax, and of course state funding showing in purple. Now, the bottom two charts just show the same thing as the top two charts, except in a line chart form. And the reason why we did this is because we have different users that are going to be using the system. We might have different user, different preferences for how they want to see the data, so that's a good feature to have. Uh, really quickly, and I just want to make a mental note, uh, what is the projected revenue for 2020? It is the total projected revenue for 2020. Yeah, I can see that that is around $37 million. Okay, I'm just going to the bottom, and I'm actually just going to save this to resources. Well, I'm going to put in that.
I have a question from Professor Vermon.
Sure.
Uh, in your status updates, uh, when the status has changed, is there a semantic indicator, a div or class something text that also conveys the status? Or is it probably the only indicator? In the status updates of tasks.
Yeah, I think it is one of them.
Is there any semantic indicator, or is it just color?
Yeah, so it has color, and then it also pretty much shows that the status has changed.
On the, on this page, is there a semantic indicator, or is it just the color? Semantic meanness.
Talk to the two category. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so you're going to just save that to resources, so if we want. So if you want, you're to the resources page, and this shows all of the files that have been saved or. So if you want to look here to the resources page, and this shows all of the files that have been saved or uploaded within the budget process initiative. You can see at the bottom that we have the revenue projection file, which is the one that we just saved to this page. Now, if you want to, you can publish or don't publish from here. Uh, Connor's going to get into that later. So for now, do what I want to do is complete the second part of my task, which is to run a five year spending projection. So I'm going to navigate to the top gray header and click on spending projection. This is going to bring me to a very similar page that we saw before. There's a number of parameters that a user has to input and then give them on the projection. So first, we have an anomaly map. The anomaly map represents a future expected cost as to be entered uh moving forward. So in the case of Madison County, this represents their fire department. We're going to have to take over the crossing fire department and they told us it's going to be around five million dollars due to the code. Let's put in five million for the anomaly map. Then we want to run a five year projection, so it's just like five. And then remember, if we want to, we could just click that box and set it a manual inflation rate. But for now, we just want to do the automatic inflation rate. So let's run that projection. And so what you're looking at here in the top left graph, where we shared the presentation. And this shows twenty twenty-three plus the ninety-five percent uh confidence range for projected future expenditure. Twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six. Sorry, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, over in the right graph, you can see the average total expenditure, so that blue line in the left. Like broken down by public safety, school funding, cover, and the anomaly map. Now, those subcategories will determine a meeting with our client, and so that's how they wanted to break it down. Now, the bottom two graphs uh show pretty much the same thing, except now it has the addition of the projected inflation. So if you remember, we did this projection using the automatically calculated inflation rate. So if I look for twenty twenty-four at the inflation rate, I can see that it was two point seven percent. But what that means is that when the model ran, two point seven percent was the average inflation rate out of those one thousand simulations. The finisher for twenty twenty-five moving forward. Now, really quickly, I want to uh go to the top left graph. And I just want to make note, like, just when we ran the revenue projection, it said that in twenty twenty-eight. It was expecting that revenues would be around thirty-seven million dollars. According to the parameters that we put in, if we look at the expected uh expenditure. It's between thirty-six million all the way up to almost forty million dollars. So that is why this system is so important, because it allows us to put Madison County in a position. Where they can now use a proactive approach instead of a reactive approach to combat an institution. And when everyone is on the same page about the future of Madison County. And we can quickly, you know, allocate resources appropriately and begin working on economic development strategies. So let's just scroll down to the bottom here. We want to show you everything down in this report. This one exports the Excel file. So I'm going to click on that file. And basically, this file is going to have two uh worksheets. So in one of the worksheets, it has all the data points that was captured by the model, produced by the model. And so this is going to have the upper confidence limit, the average, and the lower confidence limit, for all of the subcategory expenditures, as well as the total expenditure. Now, over in the other worksheet, you can see that it's all the same charts that we see in the system. But since this is now in Excel format, a user can, you know, do further analysis on this data, because all the data points are there. And they can change the charts to however they want, that's fully adaptable. And not to mention, they can share these Excel files amongst each other. So it really needs every single individual to be. So let's head back to the system now. And let's uh mark that task that we just completed as complete. And let's hover over the task manager, click on that, and then we can see there, change that to completed. Okay, so as I mentioned, you know, when we look at and compare this revenue projection with the spending projection. It's saying that by twenty twenty-eight, there's a good chance that Madison County won't be able to cover their own costs without diving into the reserve. And so what do we do about this? Well, if we head back to the initiatives page by clicking on that icon. Uh, you can then head into the economic development initiative. And remember, I'm acting as Brian here, so I'm going to click into the proposed developments. Because obviously, what are we going to do to generate revenue in the future so that we can cover our costs? And what you can see here is a page that basically prioritizes all the proposed developments in order of impact. And at the top, we have a high impact uh data warehouse and proposed economic activity. So I'm going to look further into that by clicking on the magnet file class there. And this is going to show me all the details of it. So what's the name of it? What's the description, the impact level, as well as the data that was created? So what I want to do is I want to upload a file, and I want to upload that spending projection file that I saved. And the reason why I want to do that is to basically serve as evidence for why we need to enact this economic development activity. And so once that's done, you can see that it's now attached to the proposed development activity. So the final thing I want to do is to send a message in discussion board, basically letting everyone know that I just did. So I'm going to hover over the discussion board, click on that. I'm just going to send a message and say, hey, just upload the file to data warehouse. But once that's sent, I can, you know, I'm done with everything I need to do for today. I'm just going to head to the top right corner and log in. I'm going to pass it to Alex, who's going to cover the next uh user persona.
Thank you, Tomas. So our secondary user is the system administrator Timothy Grayson. He has all the abilities that the government user has access to, but he has additional ones such as creating an initiative for subs by activity pages. Also, he can onboard edit onboard users, so he'll be managing all systems resources. And this is the user journey map that we will be going through today in the walkthrough. Connor will be performing as Timothy to show you how he achieves his goals of creating a new user and the mission.
All right, hi. I'm Connor. I'll be playing the role as Timothy today, the system administrator.
Quick question. Does the discussion board have uh notifications, does it sign notifications to users?
Currently, the notifications are only for the task manager, but moving forward, that is something you definitely. Anyways, I'll be playing Timothy today as system administrator. So we're greeted with our home page and we're going to go ahead and log in. And once we log in, we are brought back to the same initiative page. Now, I wanted you guys to notice some key differences here. So because our login hasn't happened, on the initiatives, we have the functionality to edit initiative. Additionally, we can add a new initiative. But for now, we're concerned with the toolbar on top, the adding icon of the gear, which only appears if you're logged in as a new. So when you click on that icon, you're agreeing with two options. Today, we need to add a new user at Madison County. So we're going to click on manage users. Here, you're agreed with our manage users table, which shows all the users on the table and allows you to either edit or delete or add a new user. Today, James Madison just hired, so we're going to add a user. And if you scroll down and click properly, and add that user. We can now see James Madison has been added to the system. So if we could put the analogy back to our initiative page. Like I mentioned earlier, we have some adding exclusive tools on the initiative page. So we're going to add a new initiative. Um, we're going to call this community service. We're going to choose the custom image. Um, we're going to assign James Madison, our new employee. You can pick as many or as few users as you want. And a really cool feature of our system is that anything, so any page that exists in another initiative, you have the ability to add, choose a new initiative for easy access, but it will be in its own column. So for today's purposes, we're just going to add resources, task manager, and stuff. And we're going to go ahead and put that initiative. And now you can see the new initiative with the custom picture has been added, community service. And if you go ahead and click on that afterward, you can also see that the custom uh tile of each of those for that. Okay, so now we're actually the last speaker on. If you click on that, resource it real quick. You can see this shows all the resources in the system broken down by their initiative for easy management. Now, as we mentioned earlier, a user can publish their own feature, but we also, as Athens, can publish any file. So we're going to go back to the file Ryan created earlier, and there's time protections, and we're going to publish that to the home view. So if you click publish, it'll get a box and click okay, awesome. Now, we're going to turn to the home page, make sure it's public. Scroll down, awesome, there it is. Now we are going to go ahead and sign out and we're going to use the next person. And Alex.
Thank you, Connor. Our final user persona is Agatha, who is a citizen in Madison County. And she has abilities such as searching and finding any published documentation reports that our official government staff members publish. And downloading those reports. And here, you go through walkthrough, and I'll show you those tasks today.
Hi, so I'm going to have to talk to today, and I have bought this citizen facing view page. You can note here that I do not have the ability to log in. This is per the request of our client, who we met with today. And today, I am interested in Madison County's spending. So I'm going to go to the search bar. And I'm going to type in spending. You now can notice that a search tag appears and in the resource library filters to spending. There's a spending projection file. I'm going to download that. And now that I've found what I'm interested in today, I'm going to close my draw.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. This is Citizen View. Uh, that is one of our security measures that was requested by the company. But we decided to add four more security measures to make it more secure. Uh, we added hash passwords to prevent brute force attacks on our system. Parameterized queries in S Q L so that S Q L injection malicious attacks can happen. Uh, we track session state so that data can be intercepted, or can, but very hard. And then logging your pages so that everyone has their own role in the system and they can use what they have access to. And I would ask Connor to add your button.
Yeah, so as per the requirements, we implemented our system in the shared file. The best of the best of the shared file is that it's accessible from anywhere in the world, so it's easily accessible. And also their pay as you go pricing model, so you're only paying for what you use. Additionally, the sort of file we utilize in the shared lot of cloud storage, which is also hosted from O B. Um, some benefits of the cloud app storage is we will have a prepaid to go and it's very easy to manage all your files and save.
And now it's a very high level overview of pricing. We have put a little bit of thought into it. Madison County government has two options. They can continue with the existing local server resources. They use uh virtual machines in their IT department. Or they could continue and adapt uh the Azure method. Madison County does have Azure accounts and some people as the IT director. The only thing that would be required is just some additional transition to adapt. Uh, rather on a V M kind of setup to leverage the pay as you go model and the highly accessible uh nature of Azure.
So quickly, just moving forward, some things that we did want to address that we would like to implement in further development. We would like to add additional categories to the models, as well as implement a drag and drop feature in the past management system. And then lastly, always enhancing the UI and UX design based on the client feedback, as well as additional responsive features for mobile devices. And that is all. Here with the question.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I read it. You mentioned that you wanted to add another uh category. So how difficult would it be to build a demographic side?
So some additional categories we had thought to your question are, for example, if requests would increase for five oh three uh five oh three state organizations. So it wouldn't be very challenging at all to implement that. The model on the backend is scalable, so you could insert that new, whichever software engineer takes this on after you implement it. Can add that new variable and it will display on the graph. So they adjusted these two locations and then input the data. Your SQL admin would have to be responsible for that as well. So if you want more information about that split, you can ask another professional pressing, and then the SQL admin and the software engineer will be involved in that process.
Very impressive presentation, very interesting system. Uh, I would like to commend you on probably the most impactful system documentation presentation I've seen in nine years. That's probably asking the most deep questions, actually. So one is, can we go to your interrelationship standards? Okay, so uh, is this logical or conceptual with your need? Do you have a question? Uh, so logical or conceptual? I would say this is a logical theory. Okay, thank you. Uh, can you explain to me what is the title?
Yeah, so the title is so. When you have an admission, you can activate different pages for it. And when that page appears, it kind of looks like a title, so you just call those pages titles.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, user initiated. They are. So you pay the user, you have to create an initiative, right? Or?
Only, only the administrator can create an initiative. And then when they create it, they can press which um. Which government official or users may be in that initiative.
So there is no way to save an initiative without assigning the user to it.
Correct.
I'm going to diagram show that. And so when you, since the admin is the one that can create the initiative. The admin is by default assigned to that initiative. Okay, so it involves me on, it involves us our four initiatives, the admin. Yes, and that was, that was the diagram, show that. It shows that, um.
It does not show that.
Actually, I think it does. Still, one too many initiative users. Yeah, what I was asking about is the mandatory uh. Min- minimal mandatory uh personality on the initiative, initiative user. So it seems like you require the user to be assigned an initiative and that. Thank you. Um, everybody uses it there. So I heard you say it's a detail, which is a functional requirement. Please try to say it's functional, which is fine. Are these real or essential uses?
I'm not sure.
Okay, it is essential. And some are going to say it is essential, but it's not. And then, yeah, well, we'll be honest. Very, but unlike the previous, you showed real uses, which is totally fine. I think you're trying to, these are most important functional requirements. And that could, what could have been done would be more than just. Hey, I have a couple more, but is that okay? Okay, uh, just fun. Um, I have a question for the fourth man. Um, it looks like this product has been well matched. Uh, and you mentioned that you're, that's our probably for extreme program. Uh, seems like it, did you use agile approach or did you use meta dot?
We use an agile framework. I don't know if that answers the question.
Uh, and what framework is that?
It's through a program.
Okay, uh. All right, uh, but my question was, did you use meta dot? Or any of them? Or did you use agile or meta dot?
We used agile. Okay, I see where you're going with this. We did use user testing, other practices within agile. So I would say, yes, we did use agile methodology and we call it the X P.
Okay. Uh, just by time, I don't think that if you call it a methodology, you are agile.
Okay.
But if you choose to use agile, there's no place for meta dot. You understand?
I see where you're going with that.
Yeah, thank you, friends.
Hey, um, I wanted to ask a little bit about the user loading test module that we did. I wanted to know how briefly you were doing that, what you were testing. And then again, what some of those lead points were. That you were able to identify and what those solutions specifically were that end up in your product.
Absolutely. We started doing user testing probably within the second iteration of our model. So very early on, we identified, I mean, we had some examples. Some lead points such as the click down arrow, and then our professors, other users have said that they wanted to know exactly what certain things were. Description elements, so we implemented a little icon that pops up on the cover. Other things such as the navigation, virtualization title link after testing show that these are all components. That answer everything? That answer everything?
I've got the same question from Professor Herman about the web accessibility guidelines. For your colors testing for contrast ratios or any other white content that we see the guidelines follow.
Yes, they were. I cannot remember the list of all the top of my mind, but we did do testing to make sure that. Especially if we're colorblind as well as black and white with the blue, blue and black. But that was sensitive.
Thank you.
Can you give us one?
How hard would it be to add a citizen's component that would not be saved into the system? But to allow the owners of the product and the documents that are indisputable will allow them to manipulate that using the order of message. And if you find the basis of character matches, now I think this kind of process, citizens should be able to.
Okay, so that's an interesting point. So. The problem is if you basically have to give them a login account. And then what they do is create new initiatives that's for citizens. And then they will be able to have access to like the store, the spending, spending projection, burning projection, all that within that initiative. So it is possible, but you would have to give them a lot of pronouncements.
People was giving. I had for a caption on the prior presentation about cycling the sort of work. Is there an archive place, what reports were generated? I guess two part. The citizens, those reports that are uploaded in place, it will remain there. Is there an archive function for that similar for the internal users to be officials and staffs?
Yeah, so basically you have a new resource that is published, the remaining parts are listed, it's committed. And then every file is uploaded to the individual initiative resources. Will all be stored in the admin resources. So if we show that. It's an admin resources. Managed resource. So this is kind of like a laboratory for all the files in the system. So currently we only have the admin that has access to this because our clients are the big one. Only people see, people can only see the specific files from the initiative that they're assigned. But the words that that admin ties is followed.
Also, to just build off of that, that was a great concern. Using the industry standard blog storage within conjunction with Azure Cloud. You can change the settings there. So should a user press delete on one of those resources? You could configure in Azure, so the cloud host to either automatically delete if they pressed delete. Or to keep it there as essentially an archive. So even if you're deleting things off of the user interface, you could configure it to still exist on the backend in block. So you would navigate to Azure and then your resources blog and then you would see everything there.
Which is key for our recognition. So thank you.
Yeah, and that's assuming you adopt Azure, which you already have accounts for. Like I said, you have to transition this a bit.
Thank you.
I noticed that the usability of your site is very reminiscent of some industry standards. So I was wondering if you guys have been researching on how to lay this out? Did you guys take inspiration from other industry standard products? How did you come up with the general design and user experience interface?
I can first start to talk about this because initially we were comparison to to come up and create labs similar to the solution. Initially, we use Canvas as our initiative stage to try to kind of edit that as much as possible. And then as well as Google Drive setting, we were able to see the title, date, publish and other features of that sort. And just make it very big icons that are. And Microsoft teams was also inspiration.
All right, case, we'll show them as a way to impress session. Thank you very much, Valdez. I guess that often times technological issues happen, right? We don't want that. So remember to hit those is key. All right, so we're very, very honored to have some guest judges with us today. Who will in just a few moments step out and confirm with each other on their thoughts and two final presentations. And they will discuss what we like to call best presentation. I want to make clear that I don't want to use the word winner and loser or anything like that today. All capital team leaders. They just went through a process that very few other information systems and SPAD students around the country go through. A very unified, very durable technology. So every single capital team in my view is a learner. Because they have built a system, everybody has built a working system or function system that they can add to portfolios. They can show off at those July promo parties this summer and they take a look into their careers and with lots of life lessons learned and professional lessons learned. So every single team here today should be loyal, plodding in my eyes. Of our two final presentations today, we do need the cheese. The one team that we have done the best job of implementing a solution to the problem. So getting this one soon, incoming assistant professor of interactive design, Michelle Herman. Thank you, Michelle, for being with us. Melanie Hock, who was a team member of the digital capital team, she's supposed to be, Melanie, thank you for being here. I'm John Wately. It's Ray Jackson from Madison County City, Mark Long, CEO and chairman of Blueberries. Thank you for being here. Siri, I'm a member of C I S F C N department. Thank you. And John, John DeConcha. Thank you so much for being here at K P G. And I cannot stress how much K P G is involved in this process and how large it has. So James, if you would, I would ask for to take five to ten minutes to confer on these things. If you would, may I step out to our. Will seating in the common area, sequester yourselves. Now, sorry. And transference knowledge and innovation, if you would choose four people, each a two SPAD or two C I S machine, bring your chairs up here. Grab a chair and bring this one.
You can use a jetty.
Yeah, you can SPAD and you can C I S. I'll pick the solving. First of all, I think this box may ask if you question, you may add. Any other teams? What would you think are the biggest lessons or should carry away from these classes? Professional period for you personally?
I know with our team, one of our biggest takeaways from that is that what we do with the client is. Definitely something new for a lot of us in that we have to kind of show the client other things they might want. You know, the idea of what they want can always be changing. And so we always have to be on our toes and ready to change our system or change what we're working on to accommodate what the client wants. So in the beginning, our project looks very different than what it is now. And that just comes with, you know, accommodating to the client often changing what they, what they want to do.
First, take the requirements and then the markups of your system. And then think about, okay, how can I design a database that is going to be able to store the data and you can do the things that I need to do? So there's a lot of technical things going on. A lot of us, you know, we're not full stack programmers. That's not what we're going to gradually go and do. So for a lot of us, it's just a research, you know, how does the front end interact with the back end? How do different models interact with each other, like one session state? All of that was new. It's not dimension and web design is completely different than just applications. So for me, that's a technical standpoint, there's huge.
Really, I would definitely say just completing, completing the project in iterations a lot. Where you really just start off with the base behind the labs. And then as we kept moving on and gaining requirements, once again emphasizing work with the client, which was huge for our team and that for the other, for the other teams as well. That as, as you continue to work with the client, you keep producing iterations that you will present at our sprint presentations. And you get feedback and produce another iteration.
I think one of the most important things I learned throughout this whole thing is just to get outside of your comfort zone in terms of talking to clients. Or professors or anyone else who would be like a upper level management from wherever. Just talking to them to figure out what you want to do and what the best thing you can apply to certain situations. Just, you know, gain from their experience is something that you can really use going forward.
Something important that I'll take away is how to work with people in other areas of expertise. It used to be I'd work with people in my SMAD classes. So we're all on the same page. But once we started working with the C I S students, we realized that there's a lot of things they're doing that we don't know about. There's a lot of things we're doing, they don't know about. So during the whole process, we were continuing to stick teaching each other about our majors. And I thought that was really interesting. And something else important going along that line is. When you design, you really want things to be a certain way, but all the time you have to take into account. The coding behind the design. So making sure that your designers are actually usable. Or the way you want them to do is very important. So. And you know the whole way.
I would like to hear one sentence answers from each person on the stage. If you had a time machine, we go back in time, what would you change? One sentence.
To back that, having more time in general.
To be honest, I don't think I would change anything. Just say it's so much like.
Probably from the start of the project, setting more goals from the beginning.
I guess just talking more to clients and professors about what specific things they wanted and I guess. Just determining more of what you need to do to build out a project, a complete system.
I wish to have my son a little earlier and had great friends and I love him. Great group and I wish that I was creative enough to be able to. Eat more snacks as a team, call and visit professors by week two at the latest period.
I wish we had planned our design process more. I think a lot of times it's all like the fast speed sprints. And we didn't have time to make markups by the time they needed them to code. So I would say maybe we should go this time.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a question. Week as a birthday and I think also in terms of the single implant spent a lot of time with both groups on stage. So I would like to stick with the one sentence statement, but tell us. One moment that you, in terms of like changes, the revisions you made that really. You realize that you have to make a choice. We have to make a decision. Have to explain that.
In one sentence?
No, I just, I mean, it just, what was one moment that we had that you're like, oh my gosh, like we're gonna have to actually. Stop or change or do something.
I would go with when we were in Dr. Drew's office, we were talking to Dr. Drew over Zoom, doing usability testing. We were trying to decide how we wanted our workspaces or departments or collaborations. We have them all free at one point and we really needed to define what we were trying to make better and make it more accessible to more people. So we ended up getting rid of most of these complicated things that we're making and simplified it down into workspace. By simply getting our history and.
He pretty much took the words out of his mouth. So I guess mainly all the bugs that we found out. Because Professor Drew does not like to type in the text boxes.
You have an hamburger menu that you knowledge. Have you been very good with us?
I believe when you, when Professor Drew could not figure out the difference between like the workspaces. Trying to decide how to make those look different. That was also my understanding of burger menu.
I think for us, because of the new I S background, I was very angry in my mind that like. Put me on logo and I'm going home and we found her as registered by that just wasn't so intuitive for all of our other clients that are needs. And so I'm going to go against my training and actually put them on. It was simply a. When there was a period of time that Tomas was calling for help to improve after the first iteration for the model. And then the moment where we decided we had to make a better change. So we did it again. And then that was worth it. The nerves and the work to do there.
I feel like most things have been touched on, so. I think we had a brilliant, brilliant team of C I S students. So I think as an signer, they changed how brilliant things they realized. And like, oh, you guys have to make a lot of work for us. So.
All right, Keith, thank you very much. So our two hundred places, thank you both a lot. I had Michael to.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out to celebrate the success of these teams, especially college business or hosting. And having this beautiful facility for us to be, thanks to K E M G for feeding us. And I, it's important guys, I'm. But I want to say my favorite part of this project, we've been doing this for seventeen semesters now as a collaboration. And C I S had this project even longer before that. And the thing that is the most impressive about it is that this is really something that what you've all created. And I don't just mean the top two teams that presented today, but all the teams that created systems this term. Your systems are greater than the sum of the parts that came together. None of you could have individually made what you came up with and presented to us all throughout the semester and on the stage today. And your students will be jamming you and you're going to go out, leave here. You are going to make contributions to the world that are uniquely you. You brought unique contributions to this project and you're going to dwell on the world and you're going to be even bigger and better things. Outside of here. And I'm just glad to have been a part of that. And I'm glad that we've had this experience. Because you guys are all going to go out there, you're going to contribute to the world, you're going to change the world in your own ways. And I can't wait to see what you guys go out there and do. So if you ever need a cheerleader, hit me up. And I can't wait to see what you guys go out there and do. So if you ever need a cheerleader, hit me up. I would be rooting for you, every one of you. Every one of you guys. Go out there, take some money, you got us.
All right, so a remarkable part we did today, the judges let me know they've come to a decision. They've also let me know that they have chosen Mr. Corpers and Snowy and Hawk. Melanie, if you would, I'll let you step up and announce the decision of the day.
You did a great job to go to the teams. We really loved the presentation that we were met with today. We did ask for some deliberation, decided that the winning team, the capital project is Valley Visioners.
And thank you very much again to our judges and all our guests here today. And again, I'll be reiterating, every single team is a leader that you've all done amazing work. Go talk to the same, some of this is very important part to be taken so much away from this experience. We've had many of our three hundred suits who were here today finding out what their forty-fourth race is going to be like. And hopefully thinking about how they can track the best success in the capital course. And it's really a privilege and an honor to be able to work with Professor Lane, Professor Roxxel and Spad since to make. These these capital projects more than what they ever could be with just CIS alone. It's really an testament to the collaborative spirit of faculty at JMU. And it's also a testament to the amazing work, the brilliance, professionalism, and the. Just the gusto of our students who always never surprise me, the facts that go above and beyond what they do every single day. I'm in your studies, you're watching the world and represent JMU so wonderfully and be so far ahead of the peers in the marketplace. It can make such a difference. And that's what we, we say being the change of JMU. And that's exactly what you have been in the lead part of your career. So thank you, Val, well, thank you transparent technologies. Thank you, Team Sharp Minds for giving us an overview today. And let me thank also. Professor Jim Jewett and I've asked the state owners, Phil Vennett, Margaret Boy, I've jumped out to the show. And all of us taking you, you could not do this without KPMG sale. They are such a valuable partner in this process. Sponsoring this and offering mentor for the candidates, getting advice on how this project will. Could not do this without all of our, to all our judges today, thank you very much. Thank you to Dr. Ron Stahler, BAU, CIS and BCM. Thank you, Dr. Joey Hinshaw, Interpreter of SPAD, all of our SPAD and CIS faculty. As our team stated, they talked to many, many faculty members in both departments, confirmed with them. Had vigorous discussions on use case diagrams. That's just the way our athletes or students are. And thank you again to all the students for working so very, very hard. And as we wrap up here, since we are typically in a couple meetings, I will now hand my phone back to Professor Jewett. Our opportunity to. To. Mr. Jackson and we'll wrap this in.
Any further results? The dollar table. Most main sector further discussion. Here in all thirty-six bucks and I. Thank you all very much. Very, very impressive.
Very much. Jim here, Philly, thank you, Mr. Card, thank you, Brian, Dustin, Professor Jewett, of course, and thank you, Judge again as well. Thank you all, Madison County stakeholders. Thank you all. Have a wonderful rest. If you leave, get to go this way. Thank you.